There's just no... There's just no... Keep your... Place to get your... Somewhere to cross without screaming. That's not who I am. I'm joking. You know, I mean, people here have acted up. Here's the... He basically ripped his ass. Yeah, the... I think we're... I mean, at this point, sales is important. You know, marketing somebody. I don't think... We can get on... We just can't have that... Do so out here. We're not... We're not... We're great people that need to be accounted for. That's how it is. We deserve it. Congratulations. Every time you see one of us, it just makes our heart... I thought that that's good.
He's wearing his color.
I see he's got our color, though. It's just people happy. That was his birthday. Oh, okay. The worst time... I walked into the bookstore with my daughter. And no different from where everything... Excuse me, I still have to... I have a little more election... Thanks for the Southside colors. Yeah.
I didn't see... Well, I read.
Yeah. He's taking it.
You want me to read it? Do you want me to read it?
Just read it. Again, I just think that's... Sure to read. Okay.
I know, how about it? Such close proximity. I'm a famous person. I'll see if I can definitely watch. He said it definitely, definitely not.
You make a call. No. Same as... See him lie.
Everybody had all that to do. If I get plastic, I don't have to be...
Sheriff was playing with us two tonight. I said, if I should see in four years and you have three seconds, you're messing with me. Should've called Matt. Yeah, just in case. Hello?
Hi, Nancy from juvenile probation.
Morning, Nancy.
Morning.
Okay, good morning. It is 10:02, so I ask you to please rise, go over in prayer, and then pledge allegiance before we convene in this public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we have so much to praise and thank you for this day. We thank you for the seasons that our valley experiences. Sometimes we joke and say we experience more than one season in the same day. We see the beauty and creation in the new life of the spring season. In life, we experience different seasons, and today we celebrate one of our employees who will move on to the next season of his life. We are thankful for his dedicated service for over three decades. Bless him and his family in their retirement, and God protect all our employees daily as they perform their duties for the services of the residents. We are so thankful for each one of them. On Saturday, we'll recognize Armed Forces Day. President Truman was instrumental to establish a day for citizens to join together to thank our military members for their service in support of our country and protection of our freedoms. We are thankful for their lives and their dedication to our country. We ask you to protect each one from any danger. And Father, next week, we'll recognize and honor members of our medical services. These members of the medical field include our first responders, paramedics, technicians, dispatchers, firefighters, police, doctors, and nurses. They're the ones on the front lines every day protecting, treating, and caring for our communities. They are the ones that run to an emergency on a moment's notice to assist their fellow man. They're dedicated to their service. We thank you for giving them to each one of us, providing the strength, and may your hand be over them for continued safety. Lord, as we begin our agenda, grant us the assurance and wisdom that our decisions are in accordance with your will. We humbly ask you these things in your name and give you the praise because without you it's not possible. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Now, before we convene a meeting, Commissioner Mayor Beal is at the student government day with Senator Yoll, so he will not be with us in attendance. So before we start, we have an addition... Or we have a removal. Director?
Yeah, Commissioner seeking your approval to remove the revision of policy 400, which is the compensation policy. We still have a little bit of work to do on it.
Okay. I have a motion.
I move.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Okay, we'll convene a commissioner's public meeting at this time and ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Public comment on agenda items only at this time. Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to service awards.
Commissioners, we're going to recognize James Schreiner for 30 years of service to Lycoming County and APO.
And please, we have the chief of adult probation officer here. Dave, please come forward.
Yeah, I'll talk, and then I'm going to be a little bit more brief, and then Mr. Stahl is going to speak also.
Okay, sounds good. Okay.
Where's Jim at, so I know what I'm talking about? All right, Jim, come on up. All right. Jim, the first time I met you, you came into a classroom for firearms training and yelled loudly, "Good morning, Clinton County," referencing the Robin Williams film, Good Morning Vietnam. This threw us all off, and we did not know we would be in for such a treat. You gave us a lot of advice that week, some of which I cannot share today. I will share that during this training, you did teach us that the average career of a probation officer was seven to eight years, and we must turn our jobs off just like a white light switch when we leave work, or we'd hit the inevitable officer burnout. I thank you for that advice, and I've done my best to pass that on and still practice it myself. You've been with this county for many, many years. You have put in countless hours of hard work to help impact the clients you work with and the coworkers around you. There is no doubt that you have improved the lives of the people in this community as well as their families. You have been an excellent trainer, a great mentor, and a friend to this department. Your work as a probation officer has been so well done that almost anyone in this county and the surrounding counties knows Schreiner. Your attitude, humor, and true dedication to your job has been valued and appreciated by myself, this department, the county, and the court. I wish you a long, healthy retirement, and thank you again for your service. Thanks. Oops. Is this a roast portion?
It may be.
I, uh... I didn't really prepare a whole lot, because if you're at a loss for words when you're talking about Jim Schreiner, then you don't know Jim. Um, so I did think it would kind of be neat to just reflect back on Jim started his career in 1993. And, you know, where was the... Where was the world at in 1993? Uh, 1993 was the release of Bill Murray's Groundhog Day. Clint Eastwood's version of The Unforgiven. The bombing of the World Trade Center was in 1993. The 51-day standoff in Waco, Texas. Gas was $1.11. The average price of a new car was $16,000.
That's a long time ago.
The number-one most played song on the radio was Whitney Houston's "I Will Always Love You." And number two was, "Whoop, there it is." So many of you know Jim and I spent many, many years together working as partners in Drug Court. I interned as, you know, as a college student at Lycoming College in 98, 99. Jim was one of the founding members of Drug Court. When I first moved over to Drug Court in 2001, we spent many years with, it seemed like almost weekly, that other counties were coming in to view our treatment court and to learn from us. And there was Jim educating commissioners, judges, probation staff from really all across the Commonwealth. The Drug Court program in Lycoming County is one of the longest-running programs in the state and is absolutely recognized, and Jim Schreiner has much to do with that. Also, if you didn't know, Jim has been a PIAA football and wrestling official also since 1998. So his willingness to devote his time, not just in his efforts as a probation officer, but he's touched a lot of people across the state of Pennsylvania, and many, many people know the term "Schreiner." You know, and speaking of that, you know, adjectives to describe Jim Schreiner. Well, because this is a public meeting and it's recorded, we're going to keep them... We're going to keep them clean. But many of them are, first and foremost, and Jim's a firearms instructor. He served all across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, training hundreds of probation staff over the last 30 years. Teacher, teacher of things to do and what not to do. You've absolutely been a mentor to me and to all of our staff. Your willingness to continue to come to work, knowing that your retirement is around the corner, but you still come to work with the attitude and the effort of getting better each day. I thank you for that. It's been an absolute pleasure. I'm going to miss you.
Jim, we'd like to say something.
I...
Please, take a break.
No. I just, uh... I started December of 88 at the prison, left for a year, came back, and chose not to buy back to retirement and all that good stuff. But it was an honor to serve the taxpayers, the county, and, most importantly, I don't know if Judge Thutz is on the phone, but the courts. You know, I first started, you worked for the courts, and you still work, and you represent the courts. And, you know, my parents instilled into me that if your name's going to be on something, you, 110%, you can give your effort. God blessed me with a good immunity system, so no, I didn't call in sick very often unless I was actually sick, or since we have pulled leave, I wanted to go do something personal. But it's just a dedication, and that's just how I'm wired. The positive mental attitude was instilled in me. We had a good math teacher, and he actually had a PMA club, which I didn't join, but through sports in school and good coaches and, of course, my parents, there was only one way to attack things, and that's with a positive mental attitude. You just got to be positive. I mean, being negative is, it just draws you, but what you don't realize, it draws everybody around you down. And that's... That's something I've always tried to avoid, and those that have worked with me long enough know that I wasn't perfect. I had my days. Why did I have my days? And shame on me for vocalizing those moments as well as the positive moments. But I tried to remain positive and dedicated. And, you know, you want to put what you represent ahead of yourself, I guess, and that's what I've always tried to work towards, is my name's on something, I want it to be the best because of, not me, but who I work for and what I represent and who I represent. And I hope the office maintains that mantra. We got a good group up there, a solid group, a committed group, good leadership, very good leadership, and some good commissioners and courts, and I just hope it continues. Because when I came into the county, that was one thing that was instilled into my head by my past leaders, is Lycoming County led the state just about everything there was to lead the state in. And that is, I took that with me, and I was like, okay, well, it ain't going down on my watch. And that's all I leave. And I thank everybody for coming, and my wife Jill, and the new faces that came, like the warden over there and the deputy warden, they all worked with me at one time, so they know what the Schreinerisms are. But just keep fighting. That's all I got. Thank you.
We've all seen the series Seinfeld, and if there was a fifth character, it'd be Schreiner. So, um... Jim, I worked with you all those years, and words describe you. Your parents are amazing people. They're old-school and are hard workers, and they taught you the word ethic, and you brought that to the county, and you're dedicated, you're always there. We had a lot of fun, but we got the job done. And these individuals in the back of the room, they are dedicated. And the average PO in the country is 4.6 years, and you see careers of 20, 30 years in this county because they care about what they do. I've run into your clients, Geo Graduations, and hear them, "Jim Schreiner made a difference." He's the one that got me on the track. So you're caring for the human being, and your love to help people comes out in your personality. You'll be missed. We're glad you're staying on as a firearms instructor because your training, that was a big part with you. You always said, "You want to go home safe at night to your family." You made sure that training was provided, and you instilled it in the officers that you trained, which is so, so important. We had a lot of fun. I remember one practical joke I played on you way back in the beginning. Jim came from the prison. So I said, "Ed, I'm going to play a joke on him." And he goes, "What are you going to do?" I said, "Hey, Jim," I said, "they're creating a new position. It's a prison liaison officer." "Well, what's that?" "Well, you're going to be over... The person's going to be at the prison. They're going to work out of the prison. They're going to help transition people from the prison to get in on probation." He goes, "You mean their office is going to be out of the prison?" I said, "Yeah." "Well, who'd do that?" I said, "Nobody's going to want that. Probably the lowest guy in the total, probably you."
Which was me.
So he was stressing. He stressed...
Sorry, I was hot.
I let him go the whole lunch hour, and Ed goes, "Listen, you've got to talk to him. He's going to... He's going to go off the deep end." And I went in and told him, "Jim, we're playing a joke on you."
I think it was the colors in the parlors that told you to let me out of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that was back in... And that was early years.
One time he lost his front tooth, and Ed brought in a box of Chicklets. He said, "You can take care of it. Replace your tooth until you see the dentist." So, but we had fun, but we got the job done. And you can't do that without dedication and caring about what you're doing, and you definitely did. So thank you for your service, and best wishes to you. And Jill, give him a whole list of stuff to do and keep him busy.
One more time.
Yeah, so thank you. Would any of your coworkers like to say a word? Make sure you invite them back for the food functions, because they'll show up anyway. Okay.
You're still refereeing football, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I... I won't stop refereeing until I can't be in a position to get the kids safe, keep the kids safe. Like, if I can still move, I'll be refereeing. But I'll hopefully have, like, Portman and them will let me know, trying to use some slogans, time to start thinking about...
Yeah, we'll talk later.
Yeah. That's another passion I have.
I can't say I know you that well. All's I know is I didn't know you had a sense of humor, because every time I see you, you have a serious face and that you're on a mission, right? But I will say this, you do have a lot of respect from your peers and the people in the community. And I'll add, if you're an outsider, you don't know anything about the courts, you don't know anything about parole, probation, anything, um, they see you as something different. This goes for all of you. But when I came here and I saw what you did, it's not a badass attitude, it's a caring. And that's what's hard to understand. That's what's hard to explain to the public. But every time I've seen you out, it's serious, you care about the person, you know, that's that you're looking after. And I applaud the whole department, and I applaud the leadership in this department because you do make a difference. Thanks for your service.
Okay, thank you. Can you get a picture up with you?
Yeah.
Staff, come on up, guys.
I'm taking the picture.
Well, it'd be nice to have my wife.
Jill?
I'll take the picture and send it to you guys.
Well, this is my other wife.
Thank you.
Even though, after we got promoted, we ended up getting divorce decrees done up. We actually got a divorce decree done up. I don't care who... Is the office coming up, or is it just these guys?
Have to bring everybody up first, and then we can do several.
Yeah.
Hold on, they're bringing them.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to scoot back.
Hello?
Oh, that's a great picture.
This will be his Christmas card.
All right, one, two, three. Got it.
I took her, yeah.
I'll send it to you. Thank you.
No, um, I forgot. Good luck here.
Okay, reports. Kaylin?
Good morning, commissioners. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through May 24th of 2023 to be paid on May 17th in the amount of $946,426.88. The breakdown is as follows, with 50.21% being funded by the general fund at $475,201.24. 14.83% is being funded by grants and other sources at $140,312.86. 31.37% is being funded by RMS at $296,915.65. And 3.59% is being funded by escrow at $33,997.13.
Okay, thank you. A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, first, aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Next, I have presented is jury panel number 10 to be paid on May 11th in the amount of $2,233.40, and that is funded 100% by the general fund.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Any questions? Green and all, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to personnel actions. Jessica?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Director. Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For the sheriff's office, Eric Wolfgang is transferring to part-time. It will be a lateral change for him to 1927 per hour. His position will not exceed 1,000 hours in a year, and he's anticipated to transfer on June 11th, 2023. Also, for the sheriff's office, Jess Mizani is transferring to the deputy sheriff's position, a full-time replacement at $21 per hour, and she's anticipated to transfer on June 11th. And then for facilities management, Dorcas Carr, custodial worker, full-time replacement, hired at 1448 per hour, anticipated to start on May 22nd. I apologize if I got any of those names wrong.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Any questions of the HR director? Green and all, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Okay, move on to action items. Point one, Jessica.
Yes. Presenting the resolution, 2023, the 529 College and Career Savings Program.
Okay.
What... A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Questions?
I'll read this.
Yes, go ahead.
Whereas Lycoming County government is committed to the economic development that enhances the lives and livelihoods of residents, and whereas rural economic development commissions have identified workforce training and post-secondary education attainment rates as important factors in attracting new business and industry to an area of particular rural areas. Whereas data clearly demonstrates the strong positive economic effect that increasing the post-secondary education attainment rate has on individuals, households, and communities. And whereas research shows that a child with education savings is three times more likely to enroll in post-secondary education and four times more likely to graduate. And whereas the Pennsylvania Treasury Department offers the PA 521 College and Career Savings Program accounts that are designed to be accessible to all persons regardless of income and can be used for tuition and related qualified expenses at universities, college, trade schools, and technical schools, as well as qualified apprenticeships. And whereas research shows that the vast majority of employees are more likely to participate in the 529 program for their children or grandchildren if it were offered through their employer. And now therefore be resolved that Lycoming County Board of Commissioners is partnering with the Pennsylvania Treasury Department in an effort to improve post-secondary education attainment rates in our county, and will offer county employees the ability to contribute to the PA 529 College and Career Savings Program plans via payroll deductions, and encourage other employers in Lycoming County to follow this example by offering the same options to their employees. Adopted this 18th day of May, 2023, signed by Commissioner... Adopted this 18th day of May, 2023, signed by Commissioner Chairman Scott Metzger, Vice Chairman Tony Missair, and Secretary Rick Marabito.
This is a, an excellent opportunity for the parent to save for their child's education. We know how important education is in the scheme of life. And we know how expensive schools are. So this is an excellent program offered to the Department of Treasury. And we're honored to be a part of this.
Yeah, and we will be offering this to our employees during the open enrollment process. Um, so you'll be able to register for it through open enrollment and then it'll go into effect for the first payroll cycle of the new year.
Does this cost the county any?
It doesn't cost the county any money.
So just so.
Strictly the employees.
Savings, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Uh, 5.2, Warden.
Morning, commissioners. Uh, before you today is an agreement between the county as well as West Branch Drug and Alcohol Abuse Commission and River Valley Health and Dental Center to provide medication-assisted treatment to inmates at the Lycoming County Prison and the Pre-Release Center. Um, this is a process that we've been involved in for the last several years trying to work out all the details. Uh, we're very encouraged and looking forward to an opportunity to collaborate with both organizations and provide a, this much-needed care to our inmate population.
So give us an idea of how it works. What hap- what happens?
Uh, well, how we're... Initially, when, when an inmate is committed to the county prison, if they indicate that they're on a medicated assisted, medication-assisted treatment program in the community, we will verify that along with our efforts with West Branch. And once it's verified and confirmed that they are in a program before they came to jail, we will continue that program while they are incarcerated.
So there'll be no pause?
Correct. Well, there, I mean, there might be a slight pause as far as a day or so, but there wouldn't be a, a pause as far as a discontinuation of services while they're incarcerated.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. And Commissioner Mayor Beal had texted me earlier today. Uh, please feel free to let the public know that if I was there, um, I would be supporting the vote for medical assisted treatment in prison. He's been instrumental and very vocal about this also.
Thank you. We, we definitely appreciate the commissioner's support in this.
Okay. All fair side?
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.3, commissioners, seeking your approval on a cooperation agreement with UPMC Muncie RACP funds. Um, the, the reason for, for, for this cooperation agreement is, um, when we originally went out for the, the RACP grant, um, it was Muncie Valley Hospital. And then with the name change to UPMC Muncie, we've had to do some upgrades to the paper.
Okay. This was a $5 million grant? For that expansion?
Correct, yes.
And I can't, I can't stress how important it is to have legislators such as Senator Yaw and, and, uh, other two state legislators, Joe Pan and Mr. Flick, advocating for Lycoming County. How often have you heard the awards of $1 million, $2 million, $5 million in the past four or five years coming to Lycoming County? And, you know, it's...
Eight million for the levy.
Eight million for the levy. It's, it's quite remarkable, um, whatever they're doing down in Harrisburg to be able to bring that money up to Lycoming County. Cause this, these projects wouldn't happen if, if we didn't get their support. So I want to thank all the legislators, uh, for their hard work and sometimes compromise, uh, to, to, to bring this, uh, money back to us.
And people say, well, it's tax dollars. It's true, it's tax dollars. But if it doesn't come here, it's gonna go someplace else. So we prefer it to come here to help us and our residents. Okay. Uh, motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second? I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Uh, 5.4 and 5.5, Ken.
Morning.
Morning, Ken.
Before you is, um, 5.4 is with Shaw Carpet, um, for $14,176.20.
And this is for which project?
The sheriff's.
The sheriff's office, okay. That's, I thought that, wanted to make sure. And it is a 2023 budgeted item?
Yes.
Okay. A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
5.5 is with, um, Monitronics International. Um, that is to give building access to the entire third floor of courthouse.
Okay, motion?
Um, I'll move to approve.
I'll second. You have a question?
Yeah.
These are P corp, uh, funds and 2023 budget items also.
Yes.
So, so when they're talking about, um, electronics, uh, to provide system cabling, unless otherwise noted, the plenum wire not included. What, what is that? Uh, is that, is that gonna be a huge expense?
No, it is not, no.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
No, we've been doing it this way since we started building. It's, it was cost-effective for us.
Okay, and when I saw in the, in the, um, exhibit A, the total is 42, 610, 63. Contracted commercial services is 626 a month.
Correct.
Explain that.
That's the software on the computer end of things, um, the maintenance program for that. Uh, replaces or repairs.
626 a month.
Correct. It's a lot of equipment.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is. I agree. It has gone up since, um, the first time we've done it. It was, it was cheaper. It was, um, we did it before the COVID hit. And now that COVID hit, everything's just a lot more expensive. There's, and it's all over.
Just when you see a, a, the $42,000 in the total system investment, and then you're looking at, I mean, this logically, when you're looking at 626 a month, we're talking about seven, over $7,000 annually.
Yes.
Which is well over, what, 15%, 10, 12%?
Yeah, it's, it's not cheap.
That doesn't seem normal. Okay.
Okay, motion second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.6, Kelsey.
Morning, Kelsey.
Good morning, commissioners. So today I have a change order for our contract with Elijah LLC in the amount of $1,905 for a utility elevation project that we're doing. This is fully fair-funded.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Kelsey.
All right, uh, 5.7 and 8, Jason.
Morning, Jason.
Morning, Commissioner.
Do the next three.
So it's five, what's the first number?
5.7.
5.7, okay, that did change. All right. Commissioners, for your approval is, um, 5.7 is the amendment and agreement we have with the Federal Bureau of Prisons. This again is a three-month extension for the electricity contract that we've had. We've yet to get their 10-year contract back from them, so we're still doing now. Instead of doing one or two months, they've come back with a three-month extension. So it's just based on the 10th year of the last contract that we did have.
Okay.
It's based, so let me understand this. It's based on the 10th year? So we have not come up with a, a, an additional 10-year contract yet?
We did, and it's still in their process of getting through all their...
It hasn't been approved, though?
No, sir. No. And once we get it out of their side, we will get it back before you.
So here are a couple of my questions. Uh, the county agrees to furnish an estimate $24 million kilowatt-hours of continuous basis, which will provide approximately 81% of the federal, uh, bureau on with electrical needs. What, what happens if something happens to the generation, generators?
Oh, it just kicks on the grid. It just goes, it, it's just, uh, those, in those situations, which they have already occurred, sir, um, they just simply get their power from the grid and then we don't get, that doesn't get built.
We're not penalized.
No. Where we get penalized is through the gas generation. And we're not able to get the 2,200 CFM to the four generators. That's where we get penalized.
Does that happen often or not?
As far as the BOP or as far as us getting penalized, sir? Cause we get penal, we, it's, um, sometimes it's hard. Okay, well, it's, it's hard to get the gas generation sometimes at 2,200 CFM. That's why we've made significant strides and efforts through Bart Le Judas with the pumping out the wells.
Right.
Adding wells, uh, doing closure work as we're in that project now, RNAF for the closure. All things to try to boost our gas collection. And as, as a lot of people have mentioned, as they pull into our facility, you do not smell it. The gas collection is, um, much better than it was. Plus, we're using, we're gonna be closing off 22 acres, which will help. It'll help the Lich A generation, help the gas collection, which is ultimately where we get penalized if we can't generate. The anticipation, sir, is that actually in a year or two, we will be generating more than 2,200. So then we actually have to figure out what we're gonna do with the additional gas production. So there's some thoughts there. We definitely use it in the two boilers at the recycling center. And, uh, any access, you have to maintain that. We'll probably be looking at running a candlestick and stuff. But yes, it's, um, the BOP has tried their best to get the contract through their system. But I think there's been a lot of retirements, a lot of changing of hands in the guard at the BOP side of things. So, once I have that 10-year contract, I'll have it before you for approval, sir.
All right, so, second, we are the contractor. So we have agreed to use the rates from the previous contract, the current purchase order, and the rates will remain the same for the three-month extension.
Yes.
Beginning April 1st, well, that was a 2022 through June 30th, 2023. So are our rates going up? Or how, how do we, um, decide what our rates are going to be?
We typically work in with, um, which was EPP, now it's next era. But we do use, we use an escalator in the 10-year contract. So what they've done and what we've been doing is using the 10th year, which is the highest cost to the bureau, and that's what they're still paying. But we do figure out what the escalator is, what the cost is. As far as the formula, it's about one page long and one page wide. It is a huge formula to figure out what the kilowatt per cent. It's like point zero... Uh, let's see, it's, it's a tenth of a cent. Director, do you remember? It's a, it's a pretty impressive formula. And we usually get recommendations from the next era, which was EPP, what the 10-year price would be. And they, they do it through forecasting as well.
And then informational here, the county is estimated to save the, the prison $36 million in the electrical cost over the duration of, of the 10-year contract.
Yes.
So, you know, when people think of a landfill, right? And, and, and the prisons, that's tax money. $36 million in savings in 10 years. So when we look at our landfill in comparison to others and what we've done, you know, for renewable energy and what you've done for the wells, and you're, you're in charge, and I know you have great staff, but, uh, through good vision and understanding and bringing in the right people, the right contractors to get the job done, that's a tremendous savings. And it's also, you know, pretty cool to see how the landfill, you know, saves that money, how it produces money and generates revenue for the county taxpayers.
As I say, it's one large science project.
It is a science project.
Every day.
So I want to thank you for your service and, and bringing those extra ideas. You know, when, when you see, we, we don't really know, but when they're doing the wells and then they have the lines, and they, the weight, the weight of the, the, the garbage makes the lines bend down and sag. And then they collect the water, and then you don't have gas going through them. And so there's systems and you brought in a lot of, uh, technical people to tell us how we can improve.
It's part of the science project.
Yeah, it's part of the science project.
So...
And there is a, um, I would expect to hear more changes. I know a lot of the energy companies with gas generation are looking at other sources, not just using it to create electricity, but, um, the electric vehicle, um, programs, the natural gas stations and stuff are catching on. So we're not done by any means with what we're doing. I would have, I would, I would say in 10 years from now, we'll probably see some other different kind of proposal. The Federal Bureau of Prisons benefits greatly from the use of electricity for their facility. It gets them, uh, creds, what we call credits for, energy credits and, which they're required to do. But we also provide them with disposal. Now, once that land purchase goes through, that free disposal will go away. So, and that's all, that will all be in the...
That adds up to 5 million.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we've also, the county of Lycoming has benefited immensely from the use of that property for the last 40 years.
Yeah, absolutely.
It has been a great partnership and I don't see them going anywhere. And hopefully we, now that we have more capacity, we aren't either. All right, great.
Thanks, Jason.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Motion second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, 5.5, 5.8?
Yep.
Is the proven purchase of a cylinder replacement for a transfer trailer from Inspector Manufacturing in an amount of $15,500. This was a, a repair we had to make. It's the cylinder that pushes the waste out of the back of the transfer trailers.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
And lastly, it was a budgeted item for 2023. We're buying a new slope mower, a 2023 Altos TRX 766 rough cut mower. Uh, it is a tracked machine and we demoed it and quite impressed with it. It is gonna be from Buffalo Valley Repair in the amount of $20,511. And this is also through the Sourcewell purchasing, um, program where we get 15% discount.
This wasn't to replace another mower. It was additional because of...
Um, actually, this, this is, I would say it'll be most likely in a, a replacement, sir. We have, some of ours are going out. Uh, but yeah, this is gonna be the machine we're using on the steep slopes of our sedimentation ponds.
Do a lot of cutting with it.
Yeah, and when, again, when it rains, when your grass gets tall, you're hoping the sun will get it dry, but sometimes it's still not dry perfectly. But this, uh, machine, our staff took out, put on some pretty steep inclines, and it, it was glued to the ground, and we're really impressed with it.
Yeah, for the candidates that won the, uh, primary election and you take a look at a $20,000 lawnmower, this is cheap.
Yeah.
Most of the requests are half million, million, 1.5.
Yeah. Now, this mower, we'll start it up on a Monday and it'll run pretty through till Friday. And we'll get eight, nine hours straight of mowing every day. So we are hard on mowers.
I know, but Clinton has goats.
Did. I don't believe they're still using it. Thank you, commissioners.
All fair side?
Aye.
Uh, 5.10, Nancy Stone, one.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
A juvenile probation is asking for your approval for a community solution 2023-2024 program. Uh, this is an in-home multi-systematic therapy service. Uh, they address causes of delinquency within the youth environment. Intervention is focused on youth and family, peers, educational performance, and community support. Therapy is provided in these homes. The goal is to help parents develop schools and resources needed to address difficulties that arise. Therapists and families meet a minimum of three times a week for approximately four months. And these T therapists are available 24/7 if a crisis arises. We originally requested a new per diem of $103.52, which is a $25.33 increase. I got them to agree to an 8.7 increase, which is $6.81. So the per diem is $85 instead of $103.52.
Great, great job, Nancy. If anybody needs to buy a new car and needs somebody to go with them, take Nancy with you because she'll, she'll be able to get you a good deal. She's very good in the... She's very good at negotiating. So thank you again for what you do. You do a great job for the county and the taxpayers. Okay, all fair, or, I motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Nancy.
Five point eleven, John, are you doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Morning, John.
Morning, Commissioners. Um, this is Amendment seven for the Riverwalk Extension, which is contracted with A T C Group Services. It's a no con, no-cost amendment to basically extend the contract through December thirty-first, mine and engineering of the Riverwalk Extension projects.
Okay. A motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second. Um, any questions?
Yeah.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner, comment?
I don't have any view. Uh, just to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Snyder, uh, yeah, Schreiner said today, that just, stay positive. You control your own emotions, you know, and it can always be positive, even if it's a, a bad situation. So he gave us some good advice there today.
Absolutely. From anyone? Guess, Mr. Strauss?
I think congratulations are in order, really.
Because that's one way to look at it. Well, uh, morning, um, I'm sure exactly what I was going to talk about, but I think I know. Um, hey, man, like, James Schreiner, and I don't know him, but he sure shows a, a love for his fellow man, and that's really important, and I hope, I hope we can keep that in the county, that's, uh, that's what'll keep us, um, strong and moving forward in the, in the trying times ahead, I believe. Um, as, you know, I mentioned before in the past, we know in the Bible, anyone who works for government are actual agents of God, and he, he does share that. Um, just like to honor him with that. Also, um, when we see in, um, I will read a few verses out of Luke, chapter eleven, twenty-eight says, "Blessed are those who hear the word of God and observe it." And, um, see that with the people here, you know, and, and whether they're, I mean, I don't know if he is Christian or, you know, people are, but if, when you do hear the word of God and observe things and do the will of God, you're, you're closer to Him than maybe sometimes you realize if you're not a Christian. And, but, uh, of course, the key is to become a Christian, you know, for eternal salvation. But, um, this is really interesting. Jesus says, "For just as Jonah became a sign and an innovate, so will the Son of Man be to this generation." Um, and then, uh, he talks about Jonah being the sign and an innovative, repented. Um, then he says, mentions, "No one after lighting a lamp puts it away in a cellar in their basket but on the lampstand, so that those who enter may see the light." We can't walk in darkness and expect not to stumble and fall, and we are in walking, a lot, a lot of people were walking in darkness, and they're, they're causing a lot of havoc and trouble. But the interesting thing, when, uh, Jonah came out of the belly of, of the whale, I know the Bible says a fish, well, the Bible was written before some people decided to call that creature a whale instead of calling it a fish. So it's, that's what it was. And there are instances in history where people were swallowed by a whale and came out, and what happened to them? The, the, the acids of that whale, the stomach acids took all their hair off, and they were completely white, almost like they were, um, maybe leopards or whatever. But they also would come out with plankton on them, some luminous plankton, and they would actually glow a little bit. So that was a real sign to the innovates, and that probably helped them to listen to what he was saying. And, uh, so, the Bible's too full of truth, and that's one thing our founders knew it was, it was true when any, everything it spoke about, in history especially. And, uh, to get our way back to, um, sanity, we, we really need to start taking that into consideration, you know, how, how important the Bible is, that was the founding document for our country, was referred to more than any other document from our founders. Uh, and here's something from Francis Marion, who's known as the swamp fox during the American Revolution. He was a brigadier general in the South Carolina militia whose volunteer force could assemble the moment's notice, strike British and loyalist units and garrisons, and then disappear into the swamps. Um, and that's another thing to remember, is that about maybe fifteen percent of the population actually fought against the British, and they, and they also had to fight against loyalists, people that were here in the country but wanted to hold the Britain. Um, he said, "I know but one religion, and that is hearty love of God and man. This is the only true religion, and I would to God our country was full of it, for it is the only spice to embalm and to immortalize our republic. Any politicians can sketch out a fine theory of government, but what is to bind the people to the practice, than there's any lips?" And it says, "The heart is sometimes so embittered that nothing but divine love can sweeten it, so enraged that devotion only can be common, and so broke down that it takes all the force of heavenly hope to raise it. In short, religion is the only sovereign and controlling power of a man." And when he spoke of religion, and when they refer to religion, he meant Christianity, and, um, just, uh, and that's coming from a guy who, uh, fought to the death, you know, you know, to save the country and bring it forward, and, but the love of man is still there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comment?
Got one online.
Yes.
Uh, from Keystone Chief, inmates have been going three months or longer without medications. M H I D is more important than that, Warden. I pray your efforts are results-based.
Anybody else? Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned. Our next meeting will be May twenty-fifth, Thursday, in the room at ten a.m. Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.